All right, yep, mics are on. Good evening and welcome to this December 21st City Council meeting. This is our last meeting for 2021. So with that said, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can I have everyone join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, verity, and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Here.
Budmats.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Veneziano.
Here.
Bessassi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sonoika.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. And therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel as well as our other media feeds. First order of business for this evening is to approve minutes from a previous meeting. And there's only one set of minutes to approve tonight, and that's for the December 7th City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Thank you, Alderman Bessassi, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Alderman Sonoika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a very small one in the summary for the ward report. In the minutes, it lists COLD tar, C-O-L-D, and just a small correction to COAL for the COLD tar ban, and that's it.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other recommended adjustments? Okay, seeing no further adjustments, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. This brings us to the next component of tonight's agenda, which is the mayor's report, and I do not have anything to report this evening. Are there any ward reports? Alderman McHale.
Yes, I just wanted to let you guys know and residents know that I attended the Palatine Village Council meeting on December 13th to speak on behalf of the residents that reached out with their concerns regarding the proposed distribution warehouse that they're putting at Elgonquin and Quentin. The council did approve to move forward with this project. It is a preliminary plan, subject to certain conditions set forth by the village, but that's where we're at now, and I'll keep you updated. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Any other ward reports this evening? Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a call from a resident concerned about the firehouse on Plum Grove that we haven't taken down signage yet, and they were concerned like if somebody used it as a safe zone to drop off a baby or one of those kind of things that possibly, you know, there would be nobody there to receive it. So they asked if we, you know, is it possible we should be taking that signage down to prevent such an accident from occurring?
Thank you for that. I'm sure we'll have staff look into that and come to resolution. Any other ward reports? Okay, seeing no further ward reports, we will move on to the next component, which is the floor being opened for the public for 20 minutes. I do understand that we have a total of four signatures on tonight's sheet. Three of them are for item I, and the others for item G. However, they are not necessarily here to speak at this time, but if we have questions, we can always make a motion to open the floor and deviate for those questions and follow-up. So at this time, we'll move forward into the items pending, and if any questions do come up for item I or G, we will then deviate at that time. Item A, ordinance number 21-69, is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item B, ordinance number 21-70. It's to adopt a salary increase for certain employees of the city of Rolling Meadows not subject to collective bargaining. This two is in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item C, ordinance number 21-71. It's to amend pay ranges for crossing guard positions for the city of Rolling Meadows. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the first.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item D, resolution number 21-R-123, and it's to authorize the purchase of water meters for replacement, repairs, and new construction for fiscal year 2022. This was postponed at the December 7th meeting. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Sonoika, for the first. Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Any discussion on this item? Alderman Sonoika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So given our discussion at our committee of the whole last week where we had commed discuss leveraging their smart grid, are the, are the water meters that are being, I'm sorry, we're on D, right?
Correct.
Yeah, for the water meters. Are the water meter replacements then, are they compatible with the grid that was discussed last week?
Alderman, or Director Horn?
Not that high. Thank you. Based on the information that we were presented last week, it is compatible. However, it's not one of the models that, I can't recall, but we're the preferred in red. The meters we're installing right now began being installed in 2015 as part of a smart meter initiative, and we finished those at the end of 2018. So the total meter replacement was upwards of $1 million. So those meters have, these are the meters that would go to replace older meters, or if new construction occurred, that, that's how we would pay for the meters, this price schedule.
So then, Director Horn, when you say that it's not preferred, but it is still compatible, does that mean that if they were to be serviced, that it would be more expensive in the long run?
I haven't done the amount of research required. I know that in 2019, I believe, 2018 or 2019, we had $200,000 budgeted as part of our capital plan for antennas to be placed in certain locations of the city so we could secure those reeds at request, upon request, daily. Those got, that project got deferred as part of the, because of the ERP implementation. We wanted to make sure that the ERP software would, was compatible with the software that we were proposing with the meters. Because we had a meter system that worked remotely with a vehicle, it was an urgent issue to get those installed. So, so yeah, right now, I think it would take some research. I think just some rough calculations based on the information they give, not including any kind of annual fees, we were upwards of $750,000, based on what I heard, to install those things at every meter location. Didn't he say $100 per site? I thought he said $100 per meter location. Is that, was that correct, ma'am?
Yeah, last week's presentation was, was, was not necessarily for direct correlation with this set of specific meters.
Sure.
But it, that was for us to open our eyes for, for long-range planning.
Sure.
And making the appropriate moves when, when time presents itself and funding and finances are available.
Absolutely. I guess, I guess to your point and, and to your question, the meters we got were, are the meters the city decided to invest in, were cutting-edge and, and do, are built to do all the things you may want them to do in the future. I think is the point.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Alderman Bessassi?
Yeah, I got one other question for Director Horn. How long do these meters generally last? How often do we rotate them out?
It's hard to say. We do have some standards established, certain amount of gallons or years. I believe right now, we look at 10 years before we replace them. And again, it's, sometimes it depends. If they're a rare, very low flow and they're not getting a lot of use, they might get changed less often.
Okay.
Some just need batteries installed, so there's a variety of factors that goes into replacing. We do have a replacement schedule every year. I don't want to misspeak. The guys that beat me up if I got the number wrong, but I, I think they replace between three and 300, around 300 a year, I think is the number that they will replace in a year, or install due to repairs, things like that.
Okay, and what year did we start rotating this style in?
Based on the minutes I looked at, I thought it was 2015 is when the first meter started getting replaced, which was the commercial and industrial. And then the, I think it was finished, or mostly finished by the end of 2018. And I think, I think future years, things were gonna progress, and then they got put off because ERP became a higher priority, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything further?
No.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Bessassi. Any other questions or comments for discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion at this time, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This brings us to the next item on the agenda, which are the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of three items. Those are items E through G. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Okay, seeing none. The chair declares it an order for one motion to consider the ordinances in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. This brings us to the first line item E, ordinance number 22-00. At this time, it's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Line item F, ordinance number 22-00, is to approve final plat subdivision of Calabrese subdivision in an R2 district for property located at 2321 Brockway Street and 4940 Emerson Avenue. And the third item, ordinance number 22-00, is to amend the V-Land plan development and other relief necessary to allow for modification of an existing signage in a C2 zoning district for property located at 1415 Elgonquin Road. The question is, shall the three ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will move forward for second reading. Continuing on, this brings us to new business. It's line item H, and it's a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for December 21st of 2021. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, for the second. Is there any discussion for the bills on warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Well, we've reached the resolution section of our agenda, and this consists of one item. That item is I. It's resolution number 21-R-125, and it's to authorize the support of a Cook County 6B classification tax incentive for property located at 3876 Industrial Avenue. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Sonoika, for the first. Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Is there any discussion on this 6B? Alderman Sonoika, then Veneziano. Alderman Sonoika.
I will defer to Alderman Veneziano. I wanted to ask any of our members of the Economic Development Committee to comment on this item.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Veneziano.
Yeah, so this came before economic development this past month, and it did pass, I believe it was five to two. We did have two members that have a stance against 6Bs just because of the tax implications to other businesses and property, properties in the, in the area. But the, the question that did get raised by the committee is that if council wants to look further down the line at a dollar amount, upsetting a minimum dollar amount for the renovations. So it was kind of questioned on this one, is the dollar amount of the proposed renovations enough to warrant a 6B? It did pass, however, of five to two in, in support of it, but they did, did kind of request that we kind of look at that in a future committee of the whole of setting a dollar amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Alderman O'Brien being on the committee, anything further?
No, same exact thing, and I believe we worked with Chief and Martha, and it's going to be at the January EDC. We're gonna, since there's a lot of turnover, there's, there's new members there, is an education, like a 101 on Class B, so all of us have a better understanding. I just happen to have some from my planning zoning days. So that was requested, and Chief and Martha are working on that, I believe with Rob also, to go ahead and provide an educational session for 6Bs for EDC in January.
Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So looking at the list of items that they're proposing to do with this, racking, shelving, assembly tables, new tooling and machinery, those are all portable items which will not stay with the property. And so if, in the event that this, this was not a long-term tenant, it seems that those items will be going away, and so we're, we're not guaranteed that that, that's being built into the property. So it, it does seem that the dollar amount that's being invested that will stay with the property is, is less than acceptable to me.
Okay. With that information, Alderman Sonoika, is there further questions or discussion on your end?
Yes, I did then want to make a comment about this because I understand that 6B can be contentious for including on our own Economic Development Committee. However, until we have a long-term plan going forward, such as the minimums that were required here, I, I just don't anticipate Rolling Meadows being competitive without a long-term strategy, given that everyone else in Cook County is, is pretty supportive of the 6B. So unfortunately, for those reasons, I'll be voting in favor of the 6B tonight, but I do anticipate a, a long-term strategy coming out of the Economic Development Committee going forward, and it sounds like there are steps that are being taken to, to that end. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you. So I'll speak on my opinion. I, I agree with Alderman Sonoika, and that's why I voted in the committee in favor of this. Until we have a long-term plan and set criteria, I feel that we can't hold this one applicant accountable for that until we have those parameters set. I don't think that would be fair to them. Ultimately, this does go to Cook County for their decision. I agree with Alderman Budmats. I kind of questioned on some of the, the line items as well, but to stay, stay competitive with some of the other communities around us to hopefully bring in more businesses until we have those criteria set up, I, I feel like it's not fair that we would hold these people accountable for that. So I will be voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Any further discussion on this item? Does anybody wish to, the parties are here, just a reminder, if there's any need for opening the floor, and if not, and no further discussion, I'll ask that the clerk call the roll on adopting the resolution.
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
No.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, the resolution is adopted. This brings the council to other business and reports. I do not have any appointments this evening, nor do I have any proclamations. Are there any reports from the city clerk?
No, not tonight.
Thank you. Then this will move us on to the city staff reports. The first item here is community items of interest, and for this, I will defer to Ms. Lori Sezak. Lori, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. The December newsletter can be found on the city website. Please visit citi rm.org and click on the News and Views tab. Thank you to Walmart for their generous contribution to the Rolling Meadows Police Department's annual Shop with a Cop program that took place on Thursday, December 16th, at the Rolling Meadows Walmart. Many thanks to the police and volunteers that donated their time to bring seasonal joy and smiles to 35 resident children of challenged families. The Rolling Meadows Police Department will be participating in the Holiday Step campaign. They will be enforcing DUI violations, speeding, unlawful use of cell phone while operating a motor vehicle, seat belt enforcement, and child safety seat violations. The campaign will kick off December 17th and continue until January 3rd. The Rolling Meadows, the city of Rolling Meadows will be holding a blood drive on Thursday, December 23rd, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the City Hall Council chambers. Masks will be required, and donors must pre-register at vitalent.org or by calling 877-258-4825. City Hall and Public Works will be closed on Friday, December 24th, and Monday, December 27th, in observance of the Christmas holiday. These offices will also be closed on Friday, December 31st, in ob, in observance of New Year's Day. Refuse and recycling collection will continue on these days, with early set-out required no later than 6:00 a.m. on these three dates. The city's annual holiday light recycling program is taking place until February 4th, 2022. Holiday lights, extension cords, and power strips can be dropped into the collection boxes outside of City Hall. For details about this program, visit elginrecycling.com. The Rolling Meadows Police Department continues to accept donations for the new Hope Fund that will assist victims of disasters, domestic violence, child abuse, and other hardships that necessitate the need for financial assistance. Donations to the Hope Fund can be made by visiting the GoFundMe page located at gofundme.com/f/rmpd-hope-fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. The next item on the city staff reports are the fiscal year 2021 November financials. And for this, the financials are in the packet, and I trust the council has had a chance to review the information. However, if anyone has any questions, please contact interim finance director Tom Glazer. As has been said for previous month's financials, he's available for any questions or concerns that the council might have. Moving on to the third item, it's the January 11th, 2022, City Council draft agenda. For this, I will defer to Chief Nowacki.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, the draft agenda for January 11th, 2022 is as follows. There's going to be a motion to approve the city council minutes of December 14th and the committee of the whole meeting in December 21st, 2021 City Council meeting. There's going to be a motion to deviate. There's going to be a swearing-in of our two newest police officers who recently graduated the Chicago Police Academy. We do have some pending ordinances. We have ordinance to approve and confirm extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have a second reading for an ordinance to approve the final plat subdivision of Calabrese subdivision in an R2 district for property located at 2321 Brockway Street and also 4940 Emerson Avenue. We have a second reading for an ordinance to amend the V-Land plan development and other relief necessary to allow for modifications of the existing signage in a C2 zoning district for property located at 1415 Elgonquin Road. We have the following consent ordinances. We have the first reading to approve an ordinance confirming extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have a first reading to amend the alcohol liquor code to increase the number of licenses permitted under the Class A1 liquor license, Aloft Hotel, located on Elgonquin Road. We have a first reading for an ordinance to amend the pay ranges for seasonal interns for the city of Rolling Meadows. And we also have a first reading for an ordinance to designate a representative to Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency. We have a new business to approve the warrants for January 11th, and we have 11 consent resolutions. Way to kick off the new year. The first, here I go. The first one's going to be appoint our new city manager, Rob Sabo, as a IPBC delegate representative, and also Joyce DeLeon as the alternate representative. We have a resolution to appoint Rob Sabo as the IMRF delegate, and also Joyce DeLeon as the alternate. We have a resolution to appoint new city manager, Rob Sabo, as the IRMA Irma delegate representative, and Joyce DeLeon as the alternate. representative, and Joyce DeLeon as the alternate. We have a resolution to approve the National League of Cities voting and an ultimate voting delegate appointment. We have a resolution to appoint a city representatives to the Northwest Municipal Conference. We have a resolution to appoint director and an alternate director as city representative to the Solid Waste Agency and Northern Cook County. We have a resolution to authorize a master agreement with IDOT local intersections, authorize a master agreement with IDOT state route intersections, a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2022 motor fuel tax appropriations for public works, maintenance, operations. Next page, we do have a resolution to award a contract for janitorial services, resolution to authorize the execution of a contract with Dakra Tech LLC for the city's citation and adjudication software solution. We do have some community items of interest. We have a January 18, 2022 Committee of the Whole draft agenda, a January 25, 2022 City Council draft agenda, and we do have a closed session regarding union negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That wraps up the city staff reports. This will bring us now to matters not on this evening's agenda. Are there matters not on this evening's agenda? Okay. Well, then that would bring us to the next item, which is requesting to entertain a motion to go into closed session under section 2C1 of the Illinois Open Meeting, of the Open Meeting Act regarding personnel to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body. Do I have that motion? Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman Reyes, for the second. Is there any discussion about entering into closed session? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brian.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. And on that note, I want to wish everyone enjoys holidays and a happy and safe new year, and we'll see you back in 2022. Thank you.